Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter.
Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for all those things that you've done for us. Thank you, Lord, for those that are, that have been elected and those that are, that will be elected. Lord, give them the strength to continue on to do those things which are pleasing in your sight. Lord, please heal this nation. Let us come together as one people, one nation, under God. These blessings we ask in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Mayor Pro temp Dan Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember Natalie Lopez. Councilmember Marlon Lewis. Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Sherri Guidry.
Present.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Both Councilwoman Lopez and Councilman Broussard are a little under the weather. Now we move on to item one, public comment. And please remember, this is a time to silence your cell phones and there's no back and forth in public comment. We just listen.
Richard Phillips to comment on agenda item number three.
The only item to comment on. Hello, people?
Hello.
This can be a short meeting, so I won't make it long, besides you only giving me three minutes. It's been fifty years of business experience, mostly in marketing, major companies. That's my background. So if I seem to harp on that, that's because that's who I am. My specialty was marketing. I'd been a director of marketing for a major company. My belief is, there should be simultaneous efforts for the projects that you are trying to do for the city to make it better. I think you need to have an ongoing, active marketing plan in place, being executed as the projects are being built. So it isn't, we build it and they will come. You build it and they know that they're being done. And then when they're ready, the people are ready. I think the timing of marketing this city is perfect. With COVID and everything, you have low interest rates and you have a high inventory. That equals available buildings at good prices. So your timing would be fine, just as you're now funded for all of these projects. I think it's a neat city. I wouldn't be living here if I didn't. And if you consider my comments constructive criticism, not just criticism, I'd be very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come in, girl.
Dee Dee Johnson-Reed about agenda item number three.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I read the article in the paper about the agenda items, so I wanted to come here because I did have a few questions. I saw some of the allocations that are planned. So my first question is, how much money did the city receive? And what did we submit as a city to qualify for those funds? And if possible, would the council consider allocating some of these additional funds to programs for the children in New Iberia? And possibly offer some help to some of the small businesses that have been suffering since the pandemic has started? The pandemic is starting to rage again, and so they're not going to have any relief anytime soon. And can, can we do something to help them so that we don't have more businesses closing in the city? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes of November 4th, 2020, as published on November 15th, 2020.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
Have two of them. Motion by, I don't know who was first.
Longley first.
Okay. Councilwoman Lewis and Councilwoman Guidry. Is there a discussion on these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item three A.
Mayor Decourt to discuss proposed CARES Act allocation of funds.
Thank you. And this is all our discussion, okay? It's not, I brought it tonight because we had a pretty loose meeting. We didn't have anything on the agenda. This is something that while we are moving in the direction, while our master study is being well accepted, while we are just come off of doing it twenty-six times, the last one for the governor, and that went very well, went to the Capitol and visited with the governor for forty minutes. That went well. As you know, we did it twenty-five times. Started looking at the CARES Act money. The CARES Act, we were able as a city to apply for the CARES Act for funding from police and fire and any expense we had during the term of COVID. It was spelled out what we could ask for and what we couldn't. Kevin Zerang, our finance director, did a really good job of working the system. And we actually hired a consultant to help as well, although I think Kevin did the bulk of it and maybe schooled the consultant. But that worked out well for us. So we have a little over three million dollars. Not wanting to let dust settle on anything and having some needs and wants now, I thought we'd have a discussion item on how we possibly might spend this money. So I put it all together like I always do and brought it to y'all because y'all have to be part of this because we've been part of this from the beginning. You know, the master study, I like to remind everybody, it's over ninety projects. We did the master study. Every one of you were involved. You all came. We all had meetings. We all looked at each district. We all decided as a team, one-on-one, what projects we would try to proceed with, especially the ones, all, all the projects. So I've brought all of that to you from the beginning. So this is our projects and our master study. This council has gone above and beyond and we have been a team like no other. I really think that will continue, but for now, the people who are sitting here, I said, I'm going to bring this forward so that we can have a discussion and kind of finish in a way what we started, at least bring it to the next level. So I'll explain to you what we might do, and then we'll have a discussion. The NIPD would receive a total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're a brand-new agency. We need more equipment. There are many things that we don't have, okay? We're struggling right now to put up some cameras. We are looking at rigging up a SWAT truck. That we got a used fire truck from the fire department, but we're spending money to get that ready. We just brought a drone. We have, you know, still a lot of needs for a two-year-old department. There are many things that we don't have. To continue to fight crime, there are things we need. The fire department received three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We bought a couple of fire trucks. When you look at our aged stations, when you look at the other equipment that the fire department needs, this would be a shot in the arm for our fire department. We have to consistently spend money to attempt, because we were very close to not getting it, and y'all all know that, we had to hire a consultant to keep our rating this year. And we spent money to do that. We are going to be judged again. It might be five years away, but if we don't continue to spend money on it, we won't make it next time, and that affects all of our insurance rates. So that three-twenty, the chief and I have talked, and that will go to help fund some of that. The master studies took a stab at it and said, okay, if we take a little over eight hundred thousand dollars to do projects now, okay? I'm not saying which projects. I'm saying that we will decide that. The council, as it always will, will decide that. Could be this council, could be the next council. But we need to put that in place to where that's real money we can spend. This is not going to sit on a shelf. It's already producing projects and it needs to continue to produce projects. That's the whole point of this. So that money, we'll allocate. So think about it. You could say, we have a hundred thousand dollars for each district. What do you want to do in your district? We, we've never had that opportunity. That's not something we were ever able to do. You know your district, you know what you contributed to the master study. Let's take a project and put it in place. I don't care if you want to take the hundred and sit on it for a while and go for a grant to use that as a twenty percent match and get four hundred? Or if you say, no, I want to do four small projects now. We need to show our community as a whole, this is for real. You know, the cities never approached something in this way because they've never had a council like this. We need to show that our, we are going to produce projects, so let's put our money where our mouth is. If we take another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we say that would be our grant matches, and we hold that, I didn't say what grants. You know me, I'll go after any grant I can wherever it is. Eight hundred and fifty thousand would produce four point two-five million dollars in grants. So if we hold that money and say, okay, let's start looking for grants. Oh, there's many opinions out there of what kind of grants we should be looking for. We're looking for any grant we can get. There are no grants that we're not turning the stone on. We're not getting all of them. No one gets all of them. In some sectors, there aren't a lot of grants right now, but anything that comes up, I want to go after it. The auditor stood up there and said, the reason we put money aside that's going to help with our roads is because of all the grants, because the way public works is being a match, because the way parks can be a match on some things. That's what we need to continue doing. Our road program, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We know that we will be able to bond out for the road program at the end of next year. But you know what I want to do? If you allow me, I want to start the road program now. You know how we're going to do that? We're going to hire the engineers. And you know what I envision? Ten million dollars of roads is about what we're going to be able to bond, okay? Even in every district. You tell those engineers right now, go find the worst roads in every district and spend, spend the same amount of money in every district. We've never approached roads that way. It's always been, who pays taxes? Who, what road is traveled the most? Make it fair. The first ten million dollars, yeah, there'll be times you have to make considerations for businesses. You have to make considerations to keep your economy going with that first ten million dollars. You can't tell me we don't have bad roads in every district. So send those engineers out and say, go find, spread this money through every district evenly and go find the worst roads in every district. It's going to take them a while. They got to do core samples. They have to look at the base of the roads. They got a ton of things they have to do. If we start that now, by the time we can bond the money out, we can hit the ground running. We can start fixing our roads. If we wait, then we're going to be another year behind the eight ball, waiting on all of that. And doing that now, what does it show? We know we're serious about our roads because they suck. We are showing people now that we're moving in that direction. I would allow three hundred and eighty-five thousand to go back into our disaster fund. We have had three hurricanes. We spent a ton of money on the hack at the very beginning of, the end of last year, the beginning of this year to get ourselves operational again. No one, I don't think that's ever sat up here, has had this many calamities in a year. The COVID, I mean, we spent money on everything, and I don't see, unfortunately, it easing up. I would like to at least put that money in with the money that we have allocated for this year because I don't know what calamity is coming next. So that, let me see if I hit them all. That's kind of a general outline of what I thought we might do that made projects now, sowed seeds for the future, gave the PD and the fire department some, some help where they needed, and got the beginnings of a road program. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring tonight. I thought it'd be a fun night to do it. I had looked at some other boring things we could bring, and I said, you know, the master study is receiving a lot of attention. Over four hundred people have gone through. Y'all have all been involved. The New Iberian Now website is a couple of weeks away. When it comes up, then we will take more public comment. Because the thing we need to remember too is that this is a living document. Just because we have ninety projects, just because we have seventy in the district, somebody could come with a great idea. Somebody could come with something new and we say, okay, you know, off the chart, let's go for that. Or we'll pick these and proceed with them. But I know that they all won't receive the same amount of fanfare from the public, the same amount of desire of, you know, that's the one we want. The newspaper is actually doing three, I don't know if it's an issue or a week, I think a week, where we'll get public feedback. That's another way we want public feedback. When the website's up, we'll get public feedback. So we're not going to run out and spend all this money immediately. It will have time to let it process and percolate. We, there are some projects I think we could agree to that we could start on. And the rest of them, as we get feedback and we take a little while. But if we allocate the funds now, people know we're serious. People know we're here to, to do business and that this is not just a bunch of bull. So I'm going to shut up, then I'm going to open up the floor and let's roll. Dustin.
I've got one comment. As an advocate for children and parks and rec, I know for, for, going back to what the woman said earlier about children, in this master plan study, we do have lots of work going to be done as far as children go when it comes to parks and rec and doing other things around this community for children. So the money that's coming from the CARES Act will go into the, the master study that we, that you're working on, that this council is working on, and that goes toward children. So just wanted to kind of clear that up a little bit. And if you wanted to elaborate on that, about some of that, what we have going on, I know in my district, we talked about it with my, the meeting we had with you and Jane and whatever and whatnot. But I just wanted to bring that up and make that clear.
Well, the parks are very important for our future. And we all know, we got to try to keep our kids here. We all live here. We all hear the claims that there's nothing to do. In many instances, there are a lot of programs, but maybe it's not what kids want right now. And I have come to realize that, you know, some of the things we offer, we, we need to step our game up and do things differently. So I'm open to any new ideas, as I know Heather is. Heather and I kick around stuff all the time. We had some big plans that COVID kind of put off to the side because we still can't gather in large groups. There are many things we still can't do. But most of our, remember, all this master study, I'll say it one more time. It's city-owned property. It has a schematic design. It has a budget, and we have the match. But it's all city-owned property. We did not, because I did get, I don't call it criticism, just comments of, you know, why aren't you doing something for this? So why aren't you helping that? Or when are you going to do this? Some of it wasn't functions of city government. It was, you know, other agencies would have to be called in to do that because we're not set up for that. And some of it, it wasn't on city property or it wasn't, you know. So we concentrated this whole, both studies on, you know, a concise theme because that's how we've succeeded with getting grants. And we will continue to succeed with that. Do we need to have other, other issues in our community? Lord, everybody knows there is. But there aren't every issue that city government, you know, is set up to solve. But the parks are important. Our kids are important. A lot of it, we got to get our infrastructure straight. Till we get a roof on the, both of the gyms, we can't really spend money inside. Through Marcus Bryant, Beau Boyet, and Fred Mills, they're selling those bonds right now, and the governor told me as well. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars coming, and we'll be able to roof the two gyms. Once we roof them, then we can get inside and start making some improvements there. And we all know they're dated. I mean, they need that. So a lot of the study focuses around finishing off the infrastructure that we need because things have been neglected, you know? Or we just didn't have those. It's nobody's fault. I'm not up here blaming anybody. We've come through a process where there's been times the city has had money. There's been times the city has not had any. Same thing for the road program, that maintenance just got deferred. We happen to be blessed and cursed at the same time because we took on fixing all of that. But we're succeeding, and I mean, it's working, but we, we got a lot to do. Yes, sir.
Oh, I like the way that, I, I was through this administration, through other, two other mayors in the past, we had one road program. And it was like you were so happy to be able to bond out money to do some roads, but it's like when you have a business and you give one person a raise, everybody else gets mad. It was like, every council member got mad.
Yeah.
Because some council members didn't, the engineers went through town and they're the one that made the list. We didn't make the list, and some districts got more than others, and it was not a celebration.
It wasn't, it wasn't fair.
It wasn't. So I like this way you, you brought it to each council because when you represent one district, that district is the most important thing for you, and it should be.
Yeah. And it's five thousand people looking at you.
And I believe that, you know, if you get the engineer and the council member involved, then it's done. You know, you, you have total control of what's going on with those funding. And that's a smart way and it's a fair way because every time we did a road program or repairs, someone was not happy. So I'm glad to see and hear that you said. And one thing about the disaster fund.
I was on that council.
Yeah. And we probably argued.
Yeah, we did.
Is that disaster fund is funding that you might not need, but if you do need, it's there. And at the end of the day, a couple of times, we took money from that disaster fund to help another problem we had.
Yes.
As you mentioned. So putting that money there does not tie it up there. And if worse kind of worse, you could take money from it to do something and always put it back. We, we're very lucky. As long as I've been here, we always had a pretty decent disaster fund. Sometimes it was over a million, million-three. Normally it stayed around six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand. But it's always money you can go if you need it and always put it back later because you never know.
Well, you remember when we got here, you first, right out of the blocks, we had a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. You said, Freddie, why don't you take some money out of the disaster fund? We can do some other things with it and we'll just put it back, which we did.
Right.
And it, it helped do a lot of things. It helped get the police department started. It, it, it worked in a lot of ways, and then we did pay it back. But that was, that was your idea because you had seen that before.
Yeah, I just don't like unbalanced budgets.
I understand.
But, but I, I think the opportunity that this council has with these fundings coming in is something that never was able to happen in the past, that I can remember while I was here. So it's such a blessing. And you know, people like things, but roads, everyone uses it. It's like sewer. How much money we spend on sewers? It's not the prettiest thing out there, but you all need it. And we all need roads. It might not be a park, but it's something everyone uses. So it's not like you, you're, you're taking something from one person and give it to another. It's throughout the community, everyone uses. I still believe that the parish should give us some money because they use these roads and we collect money from them. But for some reason, nineteen years, I could never get that to happen. But, but anyway, I just want to thank you for doing that because I think it's a very fair way for the, each council member to be able to do what they need to do in their district or feel like what's more important. And they should know. And the engineer is very happy if the council members are happy. It makes their job so much easier. So thank you.
Deidra.
Well, you know, when we originally talked about the budget, and I brought up a discussion that you said we would talk about later, and now we have some extra money. And I think it's time that we consider doing just that, investing in our employees too. We talked about infrastructure and things like that, but if we don't have the people and consistent people working in the departments that we have, we won't have the production that we should have in order to make these projects happen. So I'm saying invest in our employees by giving them a little something when they have thirty-plus years, continuing their benefits. And you may not see because you were self-employed, but people who not, who weren't self-employed understand that, you know, oftentimes when you're in the system, like in the school system, your benefits can continue the way they were pretty much, you know, with a little bit added to it. You always had to pay for yours, so it's no big deal.
Well, I got to write the check. It is a big deal.
Yeah, but just think about if, you know, I'm paying twenty dollars for my insurance and then all of a sudden I retire and I don't have any insurance because I'm, I don't qualify for Medicare yet. So it may be three hundred or four hundred dollars just for me, not including my family, at a time when my income has been cut because of retirement. So I'm just saying that maybe some of this money can go for those benefits. And you're not talking about a whole bunch of people either.
We have had this discussion before and really haven't done anything. I'm not saying no, but I also look at the people who've worked here for ten years that need a raise. You know, my other portion that I have not, I'm not debating, I just haven't wrestled through that yet. We have good people and we are, we got great people and they are producing. But we have a lot of people that in my mindset, we lose because they're not looking at thirty years, they're trying to pay their bills now. So sometimes I look and say, okay, if we would have some extra money to do that, should I spend it on that for a select few? Yes, they made thirty years. Or should I worry about across the board trying to bring our fees up, our, our rates up so that we, people make a better living and they stay? And so I'm wrestling with, and we haven't really got far enough. I, I, I think I'll get Kevin to look at all of it because we haven't really got far enough to even know, to quantify what we talking about. We don't even know, you know, how much money we are talking about and don't know if I can afford either one. Because this is a one-time, you know, gift that I don't know what I do and I'm not going to get another CARES Act check, I don't think, you know? So I'm not saying no, Deidra, but I kind of think, I, I really had said before and kind of started with Bonnie, we went to civil service. It wasn't much, but we raised up some people, operators and different people that affected public works and, and the parks. And a few people got more money, and that was the first time since we got here that we did that. And it hadn't been done. I was amazed in how many years that people didn't, there were no adjustments. So coming from the private sector, that is different, okay? I, I know what we pay our people. I know what, you know, when you have a company, if you're going to retain your people, it's more than they make here. So like I said, I'm torn between, okay, I, I might want to do something for other people that have been here a long time, but I know I need to do something for everybody. And I don't know how I, I, you know, figure that out. I don't mind looking into it. You know, I was not thinking of that. That has to be something that could sustain itself, no matter what we would do.
And I really think it could because it wouldn't cost that much.
For that. But then when I have my ten and fifteen-year people saying, well, wait, they got more, but you know, what about me? I, I just, I'm not positive. Like I said, I'm not.
Well, if they invest the time.
Well, yeah, but thirty years is a long time. What happens when I hire a fifty-year-old guy? He's not going to make his thirty years, you know? It, it, well, it's not going to happen. I, I'm just not positive what to do with that.
Well, that would be a situation where they know it's their second, probably second career anyway, so they're not really looking for anything as they're starting a job at that point.
Maybe. I don't, I don't know. Like I said, I'm just torn. It's a good discussion and I'm not saying yes or no, but I'm just torn, you know?
I'm just saying, you know, think about investing in the people, especially when they need it the most. Sure, people need money, they're just going to spend it and whatever. But a lot of times if, if there's something to look forward to at the end, they will go the long haul. You take the low-paying job because they have good benefits oftentimes, and you like the job too.
Mm-hmm. And we do have a decent, we do have a decent retirement system. I mean, if you stayed thirty years, you, you have a good retirement system here. You have good insur, you have cheap insurance the whole way along. I'll give you that, okay? So.
But then when it, when it's over.
Yeah, but it's super cheap. I mean, I'm just saying, it's super cheap, like, like when you look.
It's super cheap now, but then when you really need it as you're getting older and getting sicker, it's gone.
Maybe you're right. But like attracting the police department, I can tell you that it's hundreds of dollars less. Officers came here from other, and there's one in the back room shaking his head. They saved hundreds of dollars because our, our insurance, knock on wood, is so good. You know? So I mean, in the other way, and I'm, I'm not arguing, you could say, well, take half of what you saved and put that aside for when you retire because you're going to have to pay for your own insurance. That is another way to look at it.
People really do that.
I got to pay for mine. I, I have to do that. I'm paying for mine. Well, like I said, it's a good discussion. I don't have the answer immediately. I, I, I don't, you know?
So you agree that Mrs. Zerang can look into it?
I have no problem if you want Mrs. Zerang to look into that.
I was very much like that.
And I don't know that, you know, the rest of the council or whoever would want to do that or if we even should do that, but I don't mind looking into it and we can talk about it. We talk about everything, you know? So. Yes, ma'am? Oh.
Well, I'm going to say off, off, off the back, I'm going to agree with Ms. Ledbetter. That's why I like to go, you know, sometimes I like to go last, sometime I like to go first. It just depend on what it is. Because I, I agree with everything that was said. And with Ms., with Ms. Ledbetter, I'll say this, I would definitely be a council member that would agree with seeing us take care of our, you know, older people nearing, nearing retirement that have been here a long time, helping them out in the long run. However, you have a point. I'm self-employed too. You have a point about getting it on the front end or getting it on the back end. You have a point. So it's going, when we get, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But I do support her idea and think it's a good idea that we look at putting some of this on the side for, for our, you know, employees, investing. And also, how about public works and parks and recreation? Is there money that, is there any equipments that parks and recreation and public works needs That because we're giving fire department and we're getting police department equipment. How, how does, is there any?
We obtained this money on the back of the police department and the fire department.
Okay.
Truth be known, the big amount of dollars is why I included them too, because the COVID covered first responders during the COVID time for both of these departments.
Okay.
And both of the chiefs were fine with this and realized, which is a, a really a testament to those two men's character. They were like, we know where the money came from. We want to spread it out through town. Do what you gotta do. Make this town a better place, you know? We don't need it all, but the bulk of it came from the backs of our first responders. So that was my reasoning. And if you look at this year's budget, we are buying equipment and doing things that we have not done in a long time. That's the budget y'all already approved. That, you know, Parks has got some new trucks, which is the first time. We uh, we are buying some equipment. Public Works is getting some new equipment. You know, we found a way in our budget to help them this year with, y'all did. I mean, we did it together. In a way that we haven't in a while, so that was why those two were in there. And the rest of it was more projects that the whole town could benefit from. But for those two, I felt it was important to pay those men and women back with some new equipment.
That makes sense. They're getting right about ten percent of the three point-
Correct.
One million, so I think that's fair. Uh, however, uh, after, you know, after our storms and all this stuff and our public work people, they, they go above and beyond.
They do.
And our parks and recs go above and beyond too, so they all complement each other. I just-
Blessed with two good departments. A bunch of good depart-, they're all good.
Oh, absolutely. And I, I, and, and I have a good relationship with all the directors of those departments.
We have good directors.
Now, when I look at the national district, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the national district. Is that uh, downtown is that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And those are-
And that's not in stone. I mean, you know, we have a total of eight hundred, nine, nine hundred thousand dollars uh, to do between the districts. If one's a little more, one's a little less, it doesn't matter. I mean, that's just to say that that money's there to make projects and to pay for them immediately.
Because Freddie, the reason why I said it, I just feel, and I've been up here four years, but I've been following the council now for probably all, oh man, twenty-four years. And uh, not at this level though.
Oh, I understand.
But-
Till you get here.
No, exactly. It's a different level.
It is.
And I just feel like, you know, I feel like the west end is always included in the data and in the numbers and in the survey, but seem like they never get their fair share of the money that uh, is included in the national historic, this national historic and cultural districts. And I just feel like if I don't talk about it as a minority person representing a minority district and I tell people all the time, I, I, I govern, if you will, a very small part of Hopkins Street. But because I'm always fa-, uh, challenged to uh, address some of the issues on Hopkins Street, I don't run around for four years, I don't run around telling people, oh, that's not my district, that's not my district. No. We, we gonna find a way to see how we can address it. But we have a lot of issues, uh, let me just say it. I've been writing and jotting down. In, in the west end, racism, in the city, racism, discrimination on jobs and stuff, housing and all of that, crime, you know, prostitution, uh, drug, drugs, drug dealing, uh, uh, gun violence, uh, blight, you know, that's, to me, that's neglect, long-term neglect, you know, of people who own, own homes, whether it's landlords, whether it's family property that was left. Education, uh, miseducation, uh, undereducation. To me, those things are some of the problems that I face, first of all, as a black man, second of all, as a minority uh, councilperson. And when I look at this money, and I'm gonna be honest with you, three point one million can't fix all those problems. But if I don't address them, then I'm sitting up here for the wrong reason. You know, that's what it was mandated that we get minority seats so that the minority uh, legislature, councilperson address some of the issues that were often, too often being overlooked over the past, too often over the lo-, overlooked. So my thing is, when I look at the national district and I look at our council districts, I just want to make sure that the west end gets the fair share of the national district. The, the money that's going to be allocated to that. Also, uh, on future grants, I want to make sure that the west end gets their fair share of, you know, the, the, the matches, you know, the, the, are, are we looking for the grants that will help enhance, uh, help, uh, scratch the surface of some of the problems that we have in our, in, in where I live, where I come at, come up at, where I, I mean, where I'm at. Do, do, does this eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in future grant matches? If I don't say it, it ain't gonna be said. I know that for a fact. You know, the reason why I say that Freddie, because I represent me. And me is all of us. And if I don't do that, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be counted. And so I gotta make sure we count it. So when we talking about future grant matches, I want to make sure that we're looking at things to do for the children. And you know, I'm, I'm on Smile Community Action Board and I learned a lot. Smile, Smile opened the school to educate, um, poor kids. It wasn't black kids, it was poor kids. You know, but somewhere along the way, poor meant black. But there's a lot of poor people that struggle in, with all this stuff here. All of the things that I named, there were a lot of poor people. So I'm not just speaking for the black people, I'm speaking for the poor people. You know, and when I looked at Smile and, and you know, we don't have Head Start anymore, I thought about, oh man, they took it away from the black people, but actually they took it away from the poor people. You know, and put it in their hands of somebody that they felt, whatever, for whatever reason, could have governed better. So my thing is, I just want to govern better and make sure that the people that I represent, their voice is being heard concerning any monies that come over here. You know, me and you talked earlier about um, doing something and it's funny, Ms. Johnson said, you know, I, I'm gonna say this. When I hear, let's do something for the children, when I hear something, let's do something. Let me just stop there. Let me say this first. One of my old men friends told me, he said, if you want to get some money, act, act, tell them you're doing it for the children in the church. Tell them you're doing it for the children in church. But on a serious note, when I hear we need to do something for the children, that's broad, that's very broad. Because my question is, what are the needs of our children? The school is educating them. The school is even feeding them. Parks and Recreation, I believe they can step it up a little bit, but then a lot of times, programs that we do have, the kids don't participate for whatever reason. Whether it's transportation or whether they, they can't come up with the twelve or thirteen dollars that it costs to participate in a, in a league. You know, so when we say do something for the children, I, I like people to say, do what for the children? Because guess what? On Saturday, I do a lot for the children. I cut their hair. And they leave with a smile on their face. But that don't fix their problems at their home. They feel good about themselves when they go to school on Monday morning. You know, it's just, it's just, we have to be, we have to get down to a science of what needs to be done. Me and you talked today, I would like to see, you say NIPD, equipment and infrastructure. I remember when I was coming up, and I know times have changed. We had the uh, the troopers, the little green and gold, uh, you know, like future police officers. We don't see none of that. I think now that we are, we got a police department, we need to do some intervention. You know, some prevention, some prevention.
I love that.
And you know, we need, we need to find a way to get some programs for our kids that these kids can look at becoming maybe police officers, maybe firefighters, you know, things that could get you out of poverty. So just, a- and I know I said a lot, but I basically want to make sure that the west end community, the minority community gets their fair share of everything, all the time. You know, and, and you, you know, you, you don't necessarily know what that is because you govern the whole city. That's why we up here, to let you know what that is. Because we're there, we're hearing these, these voices of, of, of the things that are needed in our community. And a lot of it is broad, a lot of it is broad. You know, a lot of it is broad. That's why I talked about Parks and Recreation and Public Works, because a lot of the things that we face, Public Works deals with it, the demolition of houses, boarding houses, uh, having stuff to do for our children, that's Parks and Recreation, you know? So that's, that's it.
Well, I haven't uh, I haven't seen another administration, mayor or council approach things this way, okay? So we, each one of us has contributed to each district. So when I think of the master study, it encompasses what everybody agreed they wanted in the districts. Does it fix all the problems? No. Are you right that we have problems and different parts of town have different problems, but they all affect all of us? If you represent the whole town as the mayor pro tem, whoever sits in this chair next, if you represent me as the mayor for four more years and whoever comes, you know, if they boot me out of here, whoever comes after me. You represent the whole town, so you're right. I think that we are taking a whole town approach because you have to. You're only as good as your weakest link, and if you're not concerned about your whole town, you probably shouldn't be sitting up here. Uh, and even all of y'all, because we have made a ton of decisions over our four years as a group and you all, you're right, you each represent five thousand people and you gotta look those people in the eye and never forget, you know it. Local government is the most brutal form of government to serve in because you're gonna see your people every day. You're gonna see them every day and, and they're gonna ask you questions every day. So it's also the most fun and kind of the most rewarding because you get to do something and you get to make a difference. But you all have made decisions throughout this whole process where you didn't just think about your district, you thought about the whole town. And do we have to market the whole town? Yeah, we do. If, if, I will always say that if you don't go, if you're not coming to the historic district, if you're not coming to learn about our history, I just want to include everybody in that. But if you're not doing that, you are probably not going to go to the rest of town. Do I think oil field's coming back? No, unfortunately I don't. Do I think that tourism is an industry we should embrace, but the whole town should embrace? But to do that, you gotta tell the story, but you gotta tell everybody's story, you know? That's why in one of the projects we're pushing for an African-American museum. If you can't be multi-dimensional in your approach to attract different people to come and more people to come, not the same hundred people that come. You have an event in our area and the same four hundred people show up and usually I know them all, but to, where, where's the other twenty-eight thousand? So thirty thousand, whatever. So to make that work, you do have to think about the whole town. But I don't expect any different except every one of you up here to represent your district. The, the beauty part, the trick of this, the fun of this, is that we seem to find ways to come together and make decisions that do good for the whole town while you're doing good for your district. But I don't expect any different except for you to represent your district. You're their guy, you know, just like all of y'all. You, you're their girl, you're their, you know, person. I expect that. That's what, that's what you're supposed to be doing. So like I said, the trick is to manage that and not get so focused on one thing that you start. If you notice, we've never made deals. We've never been, I'll vote for this if you vote for that. If it was something good, we did it, okay? That's a testament to all of you and, and hopefully a little bit to, to our administration. But uh, so I, I don't expect any different and this is not in stone. And of the four point two five million dollars worth of projects that that eight hundred thousand dollars matches, you're gonna vote on it. There's nothing I don't do without you voting on. There's nothing we don't do and y'all know that. I don't sign anything. I don't do, there are things that I probably wouldn't even have to bring to the council sometimes. I bring everything. I want to be transparent, number one. If you gonna get a stake, then you help me cut the cow. That's the way I look at it. So for me, it's, that's the fun of it. That's the challenge is to say, how can I take all these diverse people from different parts of town with different problems in different parts of town and pull them together? So, you know, I, I agree with everything you said. Uh, so that money, you can feel certain that I'm gonna bring it and, and you're gonna say, where's this? And every district's gonna do the same thing and we're gonna work it out like we always do. And we're gonna be fair because you've got to have a holistic approach to government. If you're worried about one part of town and nothing else, then the rest of the town is going to crumble and I realize that. Do I think we had some charges in front of us of get the town safe, get our finances straight, get some taxes money coming in here, attract a few new businesses? Mr. Phillips is not wrong about marketing at all, okay? Uh, he's been banging my head to market us as a retirement community. We can get twenty-five thousand dollars, Jane told me. We're about to do that, but we needed to have some excitement and a little bit of pizzazz and something to talk about and something that shows how unique we are to begin to do that. Do I think he's right that we've been talking about, we have some money set aside from the uh, LWCC money to do some marketing? When those mariners are coming and all that, soon, as soon as the ground's broken on all those projects and we know they're coming, we're gonna start marketing that. Uh, if we are fortunate enough to find a piece and we all agree and we end up with an African-American museum, we're gonna start marketing it and plugging in with all the other museums that, that, you know, have that interest. So I, I, I think we in the same ballpark. We just gotta keep doing what we do, you know, and, and we do it well. So I appreciate all of your comments. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to say that um, I agree with everyone that's up here that have spoken thus far. Um, but I want every council member to remember that um, we have a visionary for our city. And that the vis-, that visionary person is Freddie Decourt, but on top of that, we have a great council here. We did speak um, and over several times about particular projects that is embedded within the master plan. Everybody had an input in this master plan from every district. We had some type of say-so on what we would like to see. I just wanted to remind every elected official that is up here and we all work well together and we voted on this master plan. The next thing I that, that I want to bring up is we have uh, it was set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the national district. Um, I'd like to include Hopkins Street Economic Development District as um, as a partner with some of this. Um, I'd like to see some things done on that side of town. You know, I'm always hounding you about signage, about um, those partic-, you know, a few things. So when you get in that particular district, it's a cultural district, it's a different type of district that they'll know. That's all part of, you know, recognizing different sectors of town as you enter and exit. Um, the other thing, uh, Park and Recreations, uh, Ms. Heather do a great job when it comes down to that. But yeah, we could vamp it up a little bit when we all put our ideas and stuff together. But let's just remember that local government and municipalities do one thing. Civic and community and community activists and those that work within the community does another. We can continue to look to local government to do every single thing, or we can get out there and raise money. Um, you know, private and public partnerships, PP twos, and turn around and put that in and bring that to the council and ask and say, this is our match and this is what we'd like to do and this is what we'd like to see on our side of town. We can continue to point the finger all day long, but what I would like to do and what I know these leaders up here would like to do is to move this city forward. In order to do that, we gotta have unity and we have to have, uh, remove this invisible divide. Um, I'd like to see um, more programs for our kids done through park and recreation, um, and things like that. It takes ideas and it takes planning. So um, with that being said, on the flip side, the master study has a few things for the youth in different sectors. Am, am I right, uh, Mayor? Uh, can you point out maybe two, three of those in different sectors of town? I know we talked about the art wall.
Right.
Um, we talked about, um, and the art wall can provide different things for our kids.
That's something we could do now that we got fifteen thousand dollars sitting there.
Correct.
Remember we talked about that? That project is ready to fund. And you know, from our internal capital outlay from the budget, I was looking yesterday. There are some proj-, projects that COVID kind of slowed us down. We didn't get to. There are some that, like I finally just got the bids to go paint Bank Park Pavilion, took forever. They weren't bidding. They were all either busy or with COVID, they had shut down. Uh, now we can start that. We have fifteen thousand dollars for that art wall, which I just really think is a neat idea. We wanted to put that somewhere in the west end. The kids or whoever, civic groups, whoever could paint a message on it, it'd get painted over once a month and the next one would roll. Saw that in parish, thought it was a neat idea. It's just a way to let kids or civic groups or, you know, different community people or the city council one month or whatever, put a message up, something positive, something neat, and then you roll over it and the next one comes. Uh, that's something we have money to fund now. If you go through our study and you start looking, I don't want to be here, you know, go, go through the whole thing, but there are common projects that we have five thousand dollars. We had nailed it down, but I think we have twenty people. We only have money to do five. With a little help, tell me what five African-American leaders we want to represent their history. And you know, some people have knocked our little wrapping boxes. The ones we did downtown, tell our history downtown. If we do that in every district, any opportunity for kids to learn our history, to understand who their leaders are or were is, is something, well, we have five thousand dollars ready to go. Give me six leaders and, and let's roll, okay? The idea of printing, I, I just saw someone, some that blew me away of some drugstores and Comptons and other businesses that were on Hopkins Street. Take those pictures and print them and put them in empty buildings there. You can do the same thing downtown. What a cheap way to tell your history. What a cheap way to get people excited, okay? We uh, Marcus Bryan and I are working closely on some uh, outdoor weight equipment that works with your body weight that would go in the west end and in Seer Gates. That's something we're asking for in this coming capital outlay and he uh, thinks we have a, a line to get that. Um, we uh, let's see.
Basically taking those houses that's, that's on Hopkins Street, you're talking about the old Compton and the old-
Just the empty buildings that-
We can do alternative-
You could do something like that that shows your history and it doesn't look blighted and again, it, it, it helps your streetscape. All those little things add up. Some people think that small things aren't going to add up, but if you go to any city that has any design element at all to it, any urban planning, all of those things count. The combination of all of them uplift, uplifts your- The combination of all of them uplift uplifts your community. But we have, you know, projects in all the parks that uh, from just simple things, you know? We have some of the parks that we don't have enough lighting, okay? We have money to, some money to do that. We have money sitting from last year's budget that, you know, we can, we can now do that. Um, you know, we always looking for walking trails, you know? I got dogged on the internet about a dog park, okay? Well, I guess it's a good thing to dog me about, okay? But different people in the community wanted dog parks. Our dog park and and the one in City Park, it stays busy and it's well-used. We we spent some money on some fencing. We have other parts of town saying, you know, somebody told me the parts of town didn't have dogs. Well, everywhere I go, I see dogs and and people love their animals. So you know, that's something that is easy to do and does not require a lot of maintenance after you build it. Small parks, you know? We we have improvements at all the parks. They all don't have signage. They all don't have their hours. They all could use some new equipment or just the fence fixed or, you know, they are. Was that? Signage, yeah, you know, we need signage. That's something that we could, we could do, that we have money to do. Um, you know, when you go to uh, let's just see. We have uh, look at the tennis courts at the West End Park, they could use some help. You know, we got money to do the ones in City Park. And look, the Dragon Bolt raises money, but they come and they say, this is what we want to donate the money for. I'm not going to say no. We can never say no, but they come and say, this is where it's going. I've even asked different civic groups that have brought money, so what can I spend some of it in both parts? No, we want it to go to this. Well, I'm not going to say no. Okay, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that the other tennis courts don't have needs. So you know, there's something. Uh, the community center, I can't reiterate enough, putting new roofs on those buildings and getting us inside to start renovating the inside. You want new programs, but I don't want new programs in the night. I mean, I take them, it's better than no new program. But you can only do so much with a nineteen sixty building, you know, that's something we can uplift. Um, you know, there are.
If you don't mind me, maybe um, come Miss Heather, because can she tell us a few of the things that she's doing so far with the kids or what she uh, pl- plan to do or like to do? She's shaking her head, no, but I mean, I know she has a vision, she's spoken to me several times.
And and her and I are just.
And these are just ideas.
Her and I had a loss with COVID right now. So some of, some of what's happening.
I know you have ideas, that's right. It's just ideas, it's all about, it's about COVID, the kids, right?
We just, we talked about it, we we debated, we we went back and forth.
But I just want people to know that you actually have.
Right, right, the the big, the big push that we were going to do right away was school league programs. That was a a big, big program that we would do here in the city. When the, when we, when we spoke to the schools or to the school board, they shut it down. Because they really didn't feel like they wanted to put the kids in harm's way.
So we debated if we should do it ourselves, okay? Just because we want the kids to have activities. But then, you know, the ramifications of us going rogue and saying, well, we're just going to do it even though the school board says no, uh, that wasn't going to look good, so we.
And and we look at trying to do some outdoor programs. You know, we looked at maybe flag football or soccer or things of that sort. But, you know, I know um, Iberia Soccer Association, they're, they're pretty much doing their thing. So that's where a lot of the soccer kids are. Um, you know, so right now, we're, we're kind of just, you know, up in the air. We're just kind of waiting on our moment. We really thought we had an opportunity to maybe bring basketball back. Because I'm, I I kid you not, we have a lot of people that call and say, look, we don't want to go to the neighboring city. We want to, when are you going to start, when can you? And, you know, with a good conscious and a clean conscious, we just. We can, and 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 look at where we are now, you know, look at where we are now.
Nineteen, we can't really do much.
And and that's really the only, the only, that's our biggest hindrance, okay? Miss Sherry, I'll I'll say this to you. In the past, we've had people that have said, there are no programs in parks and recreation. And I could debate that because I could tell them a number of programs that we were doing. Mr. Lewis, you said it. Sometimes those kids don't even want to come and participate, okay? And it's not necessarily, because I've heard that comment too, that it's an old program and kids don't want to do it. But the mayor and I have talked about trying to do other types of things like maybe uh, do something with with the computer systems, with the PlayStations and the Xboxes and things like that, you know?
Parks, but why not? That's what kids are doing.
Pokemon came out again. It was big. I didn't know what was going on. I I kept looking out at our gazebo and we had a lot of people flocking out there because they were doing Pokemon. So, you know, we we talked about a lot of things and and like I said, COVID hit.
You want a crazy one? Bank Park is underutilized, okay? Well, I'd like to see baseball back, even adult baseball. You know what, if we sold beer, we would pay for that place. In other words, at one time, the city sold beer and all those leagues, you know, men's leagues went, okay? And they all drank beer and they played baseball. I didn't see a problem with that. Uh, you know, we said we have no alcohol in the parks, but I'm telling you, if you did that, you would get some use out of that park because Youngsville and Broussard have parks that are funded by recreation taxes that we don't have and they've spent millions of dollars that we can't afford to spend. But you want to steal their people back? Let them play beer, let them, let them drink beer and play baseball. I'm telling you, you know, that's a, that's a, doesn't bother me.
Of course, we have to have an IPD on on.
And the other thing is um, uh, computers, um, you know, for for the kids, maybe a couple of com- uh, Acer or cheaper, you know, computers set up within the Western Park where they can actually go.
We have a Capitol oddly request.
That's right.
That's another one that Marcus and Bo and I are working and Fred own very, we have a Capitol oddly request just for that. That we would actually put computers and and that's where we came up with the idea with, well, why can't we let them do Xbox or whatever and and, you know? It's uh, it's not the traditional parks and rec, but it's all about body, we always talk about body count. You know, we don't mean that in a bad way, but it's kind of like, how many kids are coming, how many kids are using, you know? Who's who's out there using our facility, you know, how can we get that up? Because we have a responsibility to taxpayers because we're funding all of it, you know?
I just want people to know that there is a plan. Um, you know, there are ideas and there's a plan. And we just got to continue to remember that COVID nineteen placed a blanket on that. And when I see or hear certain things on the news such as, especially for New Iberia, where they say, well, you know, we ain't got nothing to do, so we're just going to keep on shooting.
Yeah, that's a long time ago.
Um, I think that's a poor excuse to continue to say, there are things to do. Remember, people, we're still in COVID nineteen. But again, I'd like to see a partnership with um, Hopkins Street Economic Development included in that national district.
That's a good idea.
And uh, signage, um, things like that. I looked at the assets and tried to identify them in the downtown and street sector um, for city government. But I don't really, and I could be wrong, and if I am, I need y'all to let me know that, but I don't really see government property, city property that's throughout the downtown and street area, because then we can bill up on that. We cannot bill up on private property. So there's, we we need to be able to identify city property to work on. But I'd like some adjudicated properties if we can. I spoke about the nonprofit and the different land mix usage. Um, people can donate it to the nonprofits or they can donate it to the city. But whatever we do, we got to stop pointing the finger at one another and stop blaming each other and actually get out there, do the work, raise the money, become partnerships with the city. And that we have a PP two going on or uh, come to the, you know, it's okay to continue to say what we don't have. Let's talk about, identify our assets and let's talk about what we do have. And that's where I'm at. And Marla and I agree with the different issues, social issues that we have. And like you said, uh, four point something million dollars won't fix that. But at the end of the day, I'd like to see some more private and public partnerships brought to the city of New Iberia from different sectors of town. Raise some of the money, a portion, a fourth of the match, bring it to the city, see what happens. You know, and and that's just where I'm at. Um, and I just, uh, I'm going to yield back at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, you know. Yes, sir. Um, you know, and I keep bringing this up because I'm about out of this office, but uh, this position. But in nineteen years, I served with three mayors. And y'all never had the experience I had of districts not being funded because the mayor might have not agreed with the council person. Happened a lot, a lot. And let me tell you, and it's sad because the person.
Well, the people.
The the councilwoman, again, heard the district did.
That's right.
This is the first administration I haven't seen that. You know, that's sad, but it's the truth. I don't, I'm not gaining nothing by saying that. I'm just saying that that's how much I enjoyed these last four years because how this council, we might have disagreed, but at the end of the day, we came up with a compromise for everybody. And let me tell you, the first, right when this mayor came into office, the first thing he said, and I was part of it, is we need to fix up West End. And we put some money there right away. And it was never about north side Dubai, south side Dubai, it never was. And to say that and to experience that is a big deal. It's not hearsay, I was here. And the mayor was here partly for some of that also. So I think y'all lucky to have the opportunity to have a mayor that his words is his word. And that compromise, and that's one thing I learned the first year I was in office, compromise is the key to anything.
Okay, it took me a while to learn that.
Yeah, me afraid, it took us a while to get to that point. People would not understand how different me and Freddie was when we served on this council together. It it's hard to believe we 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 became this close.
I know.
But that's what it is. And I think y'all just lucky to have the opportunity to have this funding that we didn't have the opportunity to have. And where the mayor wants to be fair throughout this council through the districts, it's a big deal. I know, I know I'm tired of talking about, but it's a big deal. I never had the opportunity to have a fair uh, administration with a council. And I think y'all just lucky and I think when the mayor says something, you can market. You don't need a contract with this guy. I think his words is the contract, so just want to say that.
Thank you.
I just have to make a comment. Um, the uh, downtown area um, in Anne Street, there's a lot of uh, walkers, um, people that ride bikes, um, that type of stuff as you ride. Um, we we did bounce around about the the sidewalks there um, in the downtown area. Um, you know, to get from point A to point B, because there, you know, there's no sidewalks on Dale. That's a major area there. That's something, um.
Joe and I have started.
What is this, uh, Kediana Planning Commission? We do pay into that as a membership. I haven't seen the sidewalks yet.
It's tough to get something out of them, but Joe and I have been riding around and we actually scheduled to go do that again, I think Friday. And we are riding, looking at curbs, looking at sidewalks. We are kind of lifting the policy that the city didn't put any new sidewalks. Uh, so that is something that we are looking at because we, it doesn't take long if you put your eyes on to look at that. If you're not looking for it, I guess you're just oblivious to it because they've never been there. But they are, we'll have to check some right of ways. We ran into a problem with the safe routes to school with Pesant that one side is not going to get something because the two property owners didn't agree to rework their driveways. But now we fixed that problem and we're just going around them to 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 make the project happen. So there are some areas that we might not have right of ways, but we both feel there are areas that we have right of ways, we just don't have the sidewalk. So uh, we're looking at that and, you know, we're talking about recreation. We met yesterday, Jane and I, with uh, the head of the Pepperplex. Okay, the city owns the property. It serves twelve hundred and something kids and half of those kids are from the city for sure. So that's an area that the city owns the property. We don't run the day-to-day of the Pepperplex, but we own the property they're on. So we're actually looking at, are there some grants that we could partner with the Pepperplex? Because it services a lot of our kids. Well, Jane and I were talking about it and we were like, you know, I admit that recreation is not my strong suit, okay? I know how to do a lot of things, but I mean, we have, we are looking for recreation grants. They not easy to find. So we gave the Pepperplex a charge and said, hey, you're going to know more recreation grants than us, but they don't have any matching funds, they don't know how to apply a form, they don't have a grant writer. Bring them back to us. That's something we can partner on because it does service our kids and we do own, we we fortunate that we own the property. At the same time, they might turn us on to some recreation grants that we can get for our parks. So, you know, it's it's opening that door and and realizing, and I've said that before, I am not important, but I have a job that's just important enough to get me in trouble or to bring people together. So by starting to say, let's get these groups together and partner on grants and partner on things, I think we're going to discover some things for us that we can do. And as long as it helps our kids, I don't care where it helps them, you know? Uh, anyway.
I'll give back at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I wanted to comment on that hundred thousand dollar per district thing. I I like that idea if that was ever coming to fruition because.
Well.
I've been asked that so many times from people, because you know, a lot of people left here and went to California Houston and wherever else. And they said, how much money y'all get from y'all district for each district? And I'm like, huh? You know, and Dan, you was here nineteen years, you ever heard about them giving money per district? And let your district decide?
No.
You know, I I really would love to see that. Because it does two things. It does two things. It allows us to get our community together, people representing, let them tell us what they think they need. And it also allows them to see how far one hundred thousand dollar goes in a district.
Or doesn't go.
Or doesn't go.
Doesn't go unfortunately, because money, it it, people are amazed at how much things cost, but you know, that's.
But I think it'd be a great spark to, you know?
You know, my plan is if if the, and this is unofficial, but you know, with the money allocations that we have, you know, we have two more meetings this year, we could bring that, we could vote that into an ordinance and then next year, we're ready to go.
And so, but it might be two hundred thousand per district.
Well, uh, I I don't know if I did, but we could try, you know? I'm not making a promise, but I know what we have. I know what we can do. So you know, that's something that, you know, that's why I brought it now and said, let's discuss it now. And if it's something we want to put in place, then we hit the ground running in January. And what a gift to everybody, to our community I'm talking about. But it does give each district money to spend. We have a great outline of projects. I can't see how we can't find, and if somebody has a better one, I'm open. But that gives us the opportunity, you know, we all have to be involved. And the beauty of that is we all got to vote on it. The beauty of that is our minds come together. And if somebody has a new idea or we reflesh out one of these ideas, by the time we come together and work it out, you know, we're all going to agree on it and as we have in the past, and then we hit the ground running. So I'm all for that. But I mean, if you want, you know, hopefully we will have more agenda items for the next two meetings. This one just kind of fell in a gap. Um, but I would like to bring that and say that we, you know, finish fleshing it out and and pass that so that next year, we actually can make these things happen. And I really do need to get the money to the police and to the fire department because they have wants. And I really do need to get, I really want to make that statement in January that we are starting our road program and we're starting behind our engineers. Because I can tell you that I do listen. These projects were not done in a vacuum, okay? I I do hear our community and I get very fortunate to go all over and talk to everybody all over the place and show up to all kinds of things everywhere in town. I do listen, but I'm telling you, the things that resonated in the twenty-six times that we did the master study where I wrote, where the African American Museum was the one block at a time that we hadn't even finished fleshing out on how that would really work. The governor was was more talking, wanted to talk about that because he's a people person. That guy, you know, he's a very nice man. He wanted to talk about that more than anything else because he said, man, if you can get that going, you know, how'd you come up with this? You know, what 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 idea did you, you know? I said, well, I stole about five ideas and meld them together. But uh, those were the kind of things that, you know, people uh, were excited about and and really felt could actually, you know, transform our community. So uh, like I said, I'm willing, if it's okay with y'all, to bring it to the next meeting where we move forward with this. Um, and and if it marched along the way, that's fine. Because remember, whatever the council does, the council can undo, okay? Whatever we put in place, you know, we can change. But I think that that's a good start and I think that that would allow us to touch a lot of different parts of our community and to get a lot of different things going very early on and, you know, in in our, in the new term. So is that about it? Great, can't thank y'all enough. What a good discussion item. Madam Clerk, wake up. Item four, we have no, we move on to councilman's remarks. Got it. Uh, Marla, I'll start with you.
Hey Fred, first of all, I'm saying happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh, hope that uh, y'all be safe, we be safe. Follow the guidelines of the governor, you know, do stay close to your family, protect your family. And listen, I'm going to say this because I didn't want to keep uh, you know, going back and forth. But uh, like I said, the master plan, I I thought it was awesome. The presentation was awesome. You know, I'm I'm just an advocate for my community. That's what I am, an advocate for my community. And I want to see what's best for my community and what's best for New Iberia. Because my community is in New Iberia. So New Iberia is my community, you know, so. But uh, man, good job, we we working together. I'm looking forward to 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 work and continue to work. But uh, man, good job, we we working together, I'm looking forward to 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 work and continue to work. Again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I wanna echo um Marla about happy Thanksgiving and everybody being safe on the road. But one thing we have to let the citizens know that we are back on regular pickup with debris.
Yes.
So whenever your debris was picked up prior to the hurricane, will be picked up again, is that not right?
That is correct, we have a new company and they are picking up.
Yeah, and so um whatever it was before and the recycling's back to where it was, the same date, nothing changed. I've been having more calls about those two things in the last couple of days. But we back on schedule, whatever your schedule was, is continue that schedule to the next hurricane.
Well, hopefully next year, thank you.
I too would like to say uh happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And I do wish everybody a safe Thanksgiving. As most of you know or have heard, covid nineteen is on an upswing. And uptick in most of the states. Um. We know that Thanksgiving is a time for families to be together. But if we look at it like this, we want, like our family, to be there next Thanksgiving also. So let us do what we need to do this Thanksgiving and then next Thanksgiving, hopefully we can be much more thankful for the lives that we save by not celebrating with a house full of people of all ages and and friends and people just outside of your normal, you know, living quarters. So please keep just your immediate family this Thanksgiving close to you. And maybe have a virtual Thanksgiving with those that are farther away. And by next Thanksgiving, we may be able to really celebrate that, you know, we overcome this pandemic and our lives can be much more normal, you know, than they are right now. Uh, I would like to say that the mandate, the mask mandate is still. The governor still has that order on, so everybody should have a mask on, especially our law enforcement officers. I have not seen very many of them with them on, I see our assistant chief with his on. But the other officer doesn't have one and the ones I see outside, they don't have them on either. Remember that people look up to you as uh, you know, leaders in the community. Be that leader, you know, be the person that they say, well, he's a good example or she's a good example, she's wearing a mask. She's protecting me, I need to do the same thing to protect, you know, the people around me also. So wear your mask, social distance, and we're not socially distanced up here. Technically, we should not pull our masks down when we talk, so that's when things spread out. You know, so we should keep our masks on when we are talking, you never see me take mine off. And that's the way it should be. I I thought I was gonna wear a shield today and I might in the future, because you know, things are so prevalent. And I'm easily susceptible to germs and things like that. But for everybody to be safe, wear your mask, keep your mask on if at all possible and, you know, social distance. And keep your gatherings as small as possible for Thanksgiving and for other activities that you might plan to have also. Just think you wanna see these people again next year. So have a great Thanksgiving. And uh, see you after Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Well, I see we have among us a mask shamer, so we're not gonna call her name, but I'm gonna take mine off, uh, Ms. Ms. Deidre, cause I'm.
And I'm a social distance from her.
Well, go ahead on and back up, girl, give me fifty feet. The other thing is to, I wanna tell everyone to have a happy Thanksgiving. Um, this is a time to be prayerful and thankful uh for those that are around us and uh those that are far and near. Um, and um as far as police officers, we know that they work very hard to protect and serve us. Um, and things like that, they're not near us sitting in the back, so um I think this is a mandate um to be socially responsible and not a law. So again, I just wanna say, um, I'm thankful for this council, I'm thankful for the leaders that's on this council and I'm thankful for all the department heads and all that you do. And I'm thank you, thankful for the great residents that we have here in the city of New Iberia, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, that uh next meeting is December the first, I also want to tell everybody happy Thanksgiving and I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.